Six thirty P M. Land acknowledgement, we acknowledge that the customary ever rich indigenous history and acknowledge the race and ice people within whose traditional lands we are meeting today. Any late items?
There are no late items.
Adoption of the agenda, that the agenda of the July fourteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting be adopted as presented amended. Any questions at one? No, you can't, not till the end of the meeting. Ask questions. I'm the governor. Okay, thank you. On favor. Adoption of the minutes of the council twenty, June twenty third. Minutes of the June twenty third, twenty twenty five regular meeting be adopted as presented amended, come motion please, councillor Conoyson, seconded, council. McQuarren Cole, any questions? Here it is. So today we have a presentation. Municipal protected areas program, B C Nature recommendation at the presentation, provided by B C Nature. On July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, be you saved for information, have a motion to bring, councillor McQuarren Cole, seconded, councillor Edwards. And are they on?
Hope so.
Yeah, okay, okay, I speak up please.
Sure. We're ready to do our presentation now. I'll just, I'll put on my PowerPoint. Can you let me know if you can see that on your screen? Oh, hello?
Uh, yes, I'll just shut.
Yeah, we're ready.
Yep. Yeah, my apologies, I'll look for the share button.
Well, we actually have your presentation.
Oh, okay, okay, that's great, thank you, okay. So, um, good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for giving us B C Nature the opportunity to present on the municipal protected areas program. My colleague Molly Tilden and myself, Andrew Banks, are, we're here today to give, undertake our presentation on this program. Next slide, please. So B C Nature, as Molly and I are based in Vancouver, B C Nature wants to acknowledge that our work is held on the Coast Salish territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh Nations. These are three of more than two hundred first nations in British Columbia. Home to one of the world's most diverse assemblies of living indigenous cultures. It's our commitment to pursue meaningful work that is respectful and acknowledges the ancestral caretakers of this land. Next slide, please. First things first. Who is B C Nature? As noted on the slide, B C Nature is a federation of nature clubs throughout B C. It's been in existence for many years, a work to protect nature and educate the public and decision makers about the natural history of British Columbia. Next slide, please. The municipal protective area program is a program that arose from Canada's commitment at COP fifteen. The U N gathering of nations on biodiversity held in Montreal in twenty twenty. Many targets were set at this gathering of the U N to protect and restore biodiversity, which is under tremendous threat throughout the world. For target three, as noted on the slide, Canada made the commitment to protect thirty percent of lands and waters by twenty thirty. The thirty by thirty commitment. Next slide, please. The municipal protective area program is a program that was developed from the thirty by thirty commitment by a number of conservation groups across Canada. These are Nature Canada, Ontario Nature, Wildlands League, Alliance of Canadian Land Trusts, and B C Nature. This program is partly funded by Environment and Climate Change Canada. Next slide, please. So what is the municipal protective areas program? It is a program that is designed to promote awareness of the thirty by thirty commitment by Canada and promote the importance of local governments in this commitment. The program supports local governments in the registration of their protected biodiverse lands in the Canadian Protected and Conserved Areas Database, known as C P C A D. A goal also is to generate community excitement in the thirty by thirty commitment by Canada. I will go into this aspect a little later in the presentation. Next slide, please. So where do we currently stand in terms of protection? As you can tell, we have still a way to go to make this thirty by thirty commitment for Canada. Next slide, please. For B C, we are in a better position with almost twenty percent of our lands protected. B C, as well as Canada, has made a commitment of seeking to protect thirty percent of B C lands and waters by twenty thirty. Next slide, please. As noted earlier, as noted earlier, the federal government tracks the percentage of lands and waters protected in the federal conservation database, C P C A D. At a federal and provincial level, the information on protection is readily available and is on this database. However, there is a lack of recorded information for protected lands that are owned or managed by local governments. Which is the basis of the municipal protected areas program. It is known that local governments have protected lands that are biodiverse. And the goal of this program is to support local governments in registering these lands on the C P C A D database. Besides biodiversity, these lands can help with climate change adaptation by providing nature-based resilience measures. Next slide, please. There are many reasons for local governments to participate in M P A P. It can confirm your local government's approaches and policies for conservation and protection of the environment. For example, the mission statement and the strategic plan for the village reference the protection of the natural environment. By participating in M P A P, you can demonstrate the village's commitment to conservation and protection of the environment. You can also demonstrate that everybody can participate in a global commitment to protect biodiversity. By participating, you can also enhance collaboration with local nature groups. Next slide, please. So what lands qualify? Lands that are clearly, that have clearly defined geographical boundaries. Lands that have or achieved in situ conservation biodiversity, in other words, are biodiverse. Lands that have actions in place that prevent, uh, sorry, prevent actions incompatible conservation. And are intended to be protected in perpetuity. For the village of the Nth Cusp, our assessment would prioritize biodiverse municipal lands that have long-term protection measures in place. Such as those lands surrounding the village's hot springs. Next slide, please. As I noted earlier, the M P A P, the municipal protective areas program, is supported financially by E triple C and other grants. This allows us, the B C Nature M P A P team, to assess, review, and register lands at no cost to the local government. We generally get all of our information from online databases. And over the course of our assessment, we will engage with staff in as few meetings as possible to respect their time. And we use those means to validate our information for the C P C A D registration. We also engage with local conservation clubs if they're available. These clubs often have key biodiversity data on lands the local government, local government staff do not have. This is a key way for B C Nature to promote and engage with local communities on the thirty by thirty commitment. Next slide, please. This slide shows a sample of C P C A D registrations through the municipal protective areas program for last year. As you can tell from this slide, the registrations can range from large local governments, such as the regional parks in metro Vancouver. To smaller municipalities, such as Lions Bay Village or Bowland Island. Everybody has a part to play. And all are welcome to join this program. Next slide. Thank you. Molly and I are now available for any questions that you may have on this program. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'll let council go ahead, I've got to start my computer up. Who wishes to speak? Councillor McQuarren, give.
Uh, thanks, through the mayor, uh, thanks for the presentation. Question for you, two questions, one is, do you have? I, I heard you say that you'd want to work with staff. So my first question is, do you have specific suggestions for the lands around the hot springs? Then my second question is, uh, what actions are considered incompatible with conservation?
Sure, so first of all, with respect to the lands around the village, we had did a preliminary assessment of the village of the Nth Cusp lands. So for example, the campground lands wouldn't cover, because they're not very biodiverse from our, from our assessment, initial desktop assessment. And then in conversations with the C A O, the village hot springs lands look much more biodiverse. Sorry, that was the first part of the question, what was the second part of your question again?
Mayor, the, the, the second part was, you said, one of the four items was the actions.
So a good example would be if it's protected for biodiversity, you wouldn't allow development. And when I say development, I mean wholesale development, like building of houses or major, major disruption that would take away from the biodiversity. In saying that, the federal government recognizes that lands need to be managed and needs to be looked after. So for example, roads, parking lots, uh, trails, they're allowed on C P C A D land registered, registered. However, the goal is not to have more than twenty five percent of those lands disturbed by such actions or such activities. So an example, maybe an example is a little bit removed from the village. But for example, Stanley Park has been registered in C P C A D. But only the forests, not, not the lands around the playgrounds or the sports fields, those lands have been filtered out.
Okay, thank you.
So if I heard you right, you would take, so the parcel you're looking at is one hundred and sixty eight acres across from the hot springs. You said you would only take twenty five percent, is that what I heard?
No, I, I'm trying to say. Sorry, I'm trying to say is that if you were to plan to do build a parking lot or an expansion to a park lot or something, you have to do something with that land. You can do up to twenty five percent, it's, it's a approximate percentage. That wouldn't affect the C P C A D registration, if you, if, does that make sense? Allows you to work on the land and to manage the lands as you see fit, but also allows you to register the biodiverse lands.
Okay, thank you. And you're mostly volunteer organization?
Yes, B C Nature is, yes, is a volunteer organization, we have over fifty six clubs. In saying that, Molly and myself are working to a grant on this, this program for B C Nature.
And have you visited the property yet?
No, it's on our wish list, uh, it would be very nice for us to go up there and visit it, and if we have the opportunity, we will do so.
I, I've actually been there, I, I've actually spent quite a bit of time in the Cusp. I work for the Central Kootenay Invasive Species Society as well, so I'm somewhat familiar with that area, and I would say it's definitely a strong candidate.
Great, thank you. And another question. What about wildfires, we would protect it ourselves?
Yeah, so the, the goal, go back to the slideshow, the goal of the, of the registration is, is for Canada nowhere stands right now with the mountain protected land across Canada. And as I said to you in the presentation, the blind spot for the Canadian government is local government lands, municipal lands. They don't have a, an accurate number of how much land is protected, they know there's a lot. For example, like what you just said for the village there, that's a lot of land that's protected and biodiverse, but it's not on their database. So their goal is to seek that. So there, there, there is a, a database, it's not a, there's no, um, financial return for registering on the database. But it's just a way for the Canadian government to know what's out there and what is protected, so that, so that they, they can reach their goal of thirty by thirty.
Okay, so the hundred and sixty eight acres, you said we're almost at twenty percent now for B C parks, is that right?
Yes, for B C.
How much would this add, one percent?
Uh, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that much, but every bit counts, so, uh, I mean, I literally mean every bit counts. Uh, like, for example, in the slide, we, we mentioned Lions Bay Village, with their fifteen hectares. Uh, that, 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 it's still, it's still a lot, every, every hectare counts. And we're, we're looking all across B C to help out the federal government on this database.
And you would be, so you would work with staff, you know, to go and visit it, plan it, ideas?
So no, I think, better ways, what we do is we do a desktop analysis, so what we do is we assess whatever information we can get online, there's a lot of that information online on different databases about lands. We also then reach out to our conservation groups, uh, if there's any in the area, to see if they have any biophysical data on the land. And then we compile all that together in a desktop report, and then we would work with the village staff to make sure that we got our information correct. If there's an opportunity to visit land, we will, but we don't have to, this is purely a desktop exercise. Uh, in saying that, we are always liking, we always like to go out and check the lands we're assessing, but that's not always an option for us.
Any other, councillor Edwards? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, through the mayor, I'm just wondering, other than the environmental and conservation benefits, which seem fairly obvious, are there any other tangible benefits for the village in signing up for this?
The other one, and it, I, I have to be very careful when I say this, it's not realized yet. But there has been flagged with the federal government that if people, or sorry, local governments register their lands on the, the database. Would it count for any future grants or would it bring any extra points, because most grants are based on point system? The Canadian government has not said that it would, but we think it probably may help in the future for grant writing. That you could say that you've registered these lands on C P C A D. Again, there's no financial money available yet, but that's something that may come in the future in the grant application process with the federal government.
And just looking here, it does say economic and social benefits, funding and resources, participation in these programs may increase access to grants and conservation funding, supporting local projects and infrastructure. So, may.
May, yes, the, the usual caveat, may.
And then under economic, social benefits, this says tourism and local economy, protected areas can attract visitors, supporting local businesses and creating jobs related to equal tourism, restorations and environmental education, so. Just, I just went on your website and found some ideas.
Thank you.
Through staff, then, where do we go from here?
If the council wishes, uh, we can, uh, you know, uh, work with, uh, with, uh, B C Nature. And, uh, provide them the information they need, and then we would come back to council with a report on what it would take in order to designate the park as part of this program. Or the portion of, uh, the hot springs as part of this program.
All right, any further questions? All right, okay, thank you for your delegation and presentation, much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you very much, have a good night.
Okay, good night. Any good questions, are there? So this is the next one. Recommendation, recommendation that the Nth Cusp report presented by True North Consulting on July fourteenth, twenty twenty five be adopted. Have a motion to bring on forward, councillor McQuarren Cole, seconded, councillor Edwards. And I'm sorry, is this, is, is there going to be a presentation there, I may get misunderstood?
So yes, so basically, so this is just as if, um, staff is bringing forward a report. These are the consultants that we've worked with to bring forward and create this, uh, this, uh, this, uh, this report that, uh, or a plan that, um, was funded through a grant that council gave us permission to be forward with, so. Treat them as if you would treat staff, for example, and then you'd be able, you're able to make a decision afterwards whether to adopt the plan or not.
So, any questions? On favor?
Well, wait, no, like, you have to do the report.
Okay.
That was almost really easy. It almost was, actually.
How mu- how much time works?
Uh, it's not a delegation, so it's as much time as you need.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll work through it, uh, as quick as I can, so. So, um, good evening, Mayor and council and staff. Uh, my company, True North, we answered a request for proposal last year to develop a uh, active transportation network plan for Nth Cusp. This was a, this was actually a huge project. Our approach, we, we, um, we tried to create a practical practical plan and is ready for implementation funding. There, there's been, there's, you know, been sort of layers of conceptual plans over the years. And, um, you know, it was decided to try to, try to bring that down so that the next step is to actually implement. Uh, so, um, more of a tactical plan, we'll get into that in a minute. And, and just, um, with, with, with local knowledge, with, with walking the ground, talking to people, going through a consultation program, just trying to solve as many issues, uh, as possible. And, uh, so what, what is active transportation, active transportation is basically using your own physical energy to move around. So it includes, uh, includes all these things, walking, cycling. It also includes, uh, you know, uh, mobility aids, wheelchairs, scooters, e-bikes, rollerblades. Snowshoes, cross-country skis, anything where you're using your own physical energy to move. In terms of, uh, where, where, where this fits in as, in a, in the framework of, uh, sort of a strategic framework. So, uh, we, we, we developed a comprehensive network trail plan. Like I said, we, we, we built it off of previous planning efforts, we didn't want to waste all that effort that was done in the past, we wanted to bring all the, all the comments, consultation forward, just, uh, so that it wasn't forgotten, though, that, uh, uh, people's people's observations at the time were remembered and considered in a, in sort of a lens of today type thing. And drag, drag all that stuff forward into an implementation-ready plan. And, uh, so, you know, this, this sort of represents, I think, a major step. Going from, going from a plan to reality, because the next step is to go out and get dollars and start building. We, we built, we built a plan so that it can be, so that it can be pulled apart. There's ac- there's actually in the plan, there's a twenty different routes that connect, connect all over Nth Cusp. Some are simple, some are complicated. Some are, uh, inexpensive, some will cost a lot, lot of money, but deliver a lot of benefit. So, but we want the ability for, uh, who, whoever is driving it forward, be it staff, uh, consultant or whatever, to be able to pull our plan apart and, um, quickly apply for funding, because the funding windows are so tight sometimes, it's I think it's essential to be able to quickly gather information and apply for money. You can't, you don't have time to start from square zero or whatever, and, you know, bu- bu- building the, building the framework that you need, so. It's also, uh, we want, we want to build it just so it was easily updatable, so. There's, there's a number of tools and there are budget tool, there's a, there's a prioritization tool that can be, can be updated as things change, as they do. But, uh, it, it just means it can be easily brought to a present condition. And that, sort of the scope of the plan, um, it covers the village and then it covers the the regional district lands, it sort of immediately surround the village, so kind of the upper, upper bench lands and, and into, into browse a little bit. So, yeah, next slide, so that, yeah, that, this is, this is also sort of a conceptual framework, so. The, the, the provincial mandate is through, uh, through Clean B C, that's a, that's a government program. So they're, they're looking at reducing greenhouse gas, uh, forty percent by twenty thirty. Now, it, it, it involves a whole bunch of different facets, but the one that the one that speaks to, um, active transportation is this Move Commute Connect, it's actually a good document to read. And, um, that, that, you know, that, that lays out a little bit of the basic, basic framework. So from that, from that, the local strategic level, it kind of started in twenty seventeen with a Trails Master Plan. And then also more recently, an active, act, an active transportation plan, which was a conceptual level plan, so that, that leads into, uh, you know, what we call more of a tactical plan, which is the one that we did. And, um, it's also, it's also you know, we, we were conscious of infor- of informing that plan with these, uh, you know, with these current, um, uh, projects that are going on, so one of them is a waterfront master plan. One is a signage and wayfinding plan, which is complete, and one is the accessibility plan, so hopefully hopefully everything feeds in nicely so that you know, you don't, you don't have, you don't have plans that are contradict, contradicting each other. That was the plan for the plan anyways.
Can I, can I jump into the presentation, the one thing to add too is that this will also play into the, uh, the village's, uh, subdivision developing and servicing bylaw as well, so these, uh, this document will marry with that, which is currently in, in progress.
Okay, good, great. So collect all that stuff up, drive it into the future, and then basically, uh, there, there's an implementation phase. We're thinking, could start, uh, as early as next year. There's, there's actually, there's actually a good funding intake in September with the Ministry of Transport and Transit, and the goal, the goal is to, the goal is to build out a active transportation network that sort of makes sense for the, for, for the village there, so. And it, and that's not necessarily all painted lanes everywhere and stuff you see in other communities, it's, um, it's quite ta- it's quite tailored, very tailored to the village, so there's, there's different types of different types of trails, pathways and different standards that, uh, that would, would be followed in, in construction, and I would say ve- very good standards, it's, uh, it's not just a path through the woods or whatever, it's like building a, building a mini road network that is, um, that is, uh, made with good materials, well engineered, uh, it's durable, it's, uh, you know, it costs a little bit more, but in the long term, it's good, good, good value for the money, it'll knock down maintenance costs and stuff like that, theoretically. The next slide, I kind of talked about this already. Uh, the, the only thing, one, one thing that falls out of this Move Commute Connect plan. That is to double the percentage of trips taken with active transportation by twenty thirty. So that's not that many years away. And, you know, that, that, that involves probably lifestyle changes and bringing more people into, uh, using active transportation. And the way you do that is by, theoretically anyways, is by having like good infrastructure, safe and perceived to be safe. And, uh, you know, built, built to good standards. Well let in certain, certain cases, and, you know, just something where people have a com- comfort level that they'll go and do. Protected from traffic a little bit, so that, um, you know, you just, just take a lot of the, a lot of the fear away, and then it becomes part of people's lifestyles. So, uh, yeah, so this will talk about lifestyle choice, which I talked about. Uh, lifestyle choice or a change, so speaks to things like safety, convenience. Is it efficient? Is it fun, fun to use? These are all, these are all, uh, uh, ba- basic, basic human, uh, concepts that, that these things should be driven from, so that they're successful. And I mean, ob- obviously, the trails and pathways have to be in a good location that gap, you know, gather people up, it's an efficient network, like a, like a typical road network. Um, and, um, it should really become a community priority. Uh, and, oh, hopefully by doing that, it's, it's adequately fought back by grant funding from the province, from the feds and all the rest of this. And also a great way to build partnerships. So, um, written notes in my notes here. So, we, we just developed a quick vision, but this could, this is also changeable or whatever as, as, as time goes on, but, um, the, the vision with respect to active transportation, uh, basically a community that has a greater sense of health, self-sufficiency, pride and happiness, based on a safe, efficient and abundant, so, uh, active transportation network that, you know, ma- makes connections in the community, so it's, uh, get, getting around is a very basic, uh, ve- very basic part of, part of life, and if we can make some choices to do that in different ways, or if we're already using active transportation and our experience is enhanced, so that we'll just, uh, it will just build on itself and dr- drive things forward, so. Um, quickly, the goals, uh, so there, 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 there are, there are, there are, uh, a fair bit of existing, uh, infrastructure, so just to improve that, upgrade it, and then construct some new, and construct some new, uh, infrastructure. And, um, ba- based out on universal design principles, which, uh, th- those deliver, uh, uh, like an all-ages and abilities experience wherever possible. And it's probably easier to do that in Saskatchewan than in the cusp, because we, here, we have some complex terrain and all the rest of it, but the point is to do it where it's possible, and where it's not possible to, to deliver those standards, make what we have better, so that, so that it is, um, safer, uh, more, you know, fr- friendlier to use, et cetera, so. Yeah, and, uh, um, this, obviously, does it, design, designed routes with, uh, with safety principles uh, as a, as a, as a leading, uh, uh, as a, as a, as a leading premise. And then, uh, look at, look at investments in, in active transportation, infrastructure as a wise, long-term investment, it's a community investment. And, um, you know, the, 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 the payback is a little bit on the, on the long-term side, I think, but it will, but it, it y- it yields, uh, you will yield a better, happier community. And, um, no. Uh, and, uh, obviously, the more A T you use, the less vehicles that you need, so, uh, promotes some efficiency, it reduces greenhouse gases, which is drive, driving the whole thing in the first place from the, from the government. And improve physical and mental health. And, uh, just makes a community feel more self-sufficient and resilient. We have our, have our own stuff here, here that we can use, um. And really, another benefit is just to, uh, le- leverage that infrastructure to, it already happens now, but it could be improved to attract and entertain visitors. But also provide residents with, uh, um, with a, efficient access to those destinations, to the downtown, and also the connectivity between town and the natural spaces, which we all look out to, and I think that in itself is a, is a major draw for Nikas, is that you can sit in a nice village and you can look out. Uh, you can look out at nature and it does not take long to ke- to make that, make that connection. So the, the, you know, easily and efficient, that, uh, connection can be made to nature, I think, that's it makes most people happy, I think, is. Good, uh, so, our report, basically, the, we, the, the deliverables are a report, it's about like hundred and ten pages. Uh, a report, and then, uh, there's appendices, and the appendices, there were overview maps. Um, route maps for each route, there's like twenty routes. Fifteen of them have a, have a roadmap or multi-plot, uh, plan associated with them. Uh, and, uh, and then, uh, uh, also a bunch of, a bunch of technical drawings. Kind of a lo- mini warehouse of technical drawings that could be used to assemble contracts and stuff like that, so. To assemble a contract, you could, uh, you could pro- provide an, or a request for proposal, whatever, you could grab an overview map, the, the roadmap, the technical drawings associated with that, the budget, uh, uh, the pri- prioritization, ex- et cetera, et cetera, it's just some different key components that can be grabbed indivi- individually and packaged up quickly. Uh, so, yeah, so, for, uh, c- community, community information. Uh, we, we, we studied the community, we drew, we drew from those, uh, older plans. Um, we, we, we brought forward ol- the older consultation from those other plans and from other planning efforts. And then we, um, we were part of the Nikas Cafe in November, last November, and got some public feedback there. We, uh, there was a cer- survey that went out, actually, the results are it, uh, interesting, they're, they're, they're in, they're in the report there. Some, this is a real, uh, snapshot, but activities, most common one is walking alone on a daily basis. Walking with others on a weekly basis, and then lots of, lots of dog walking daily. Um, people's biggest safety concerns are basically traffic exposure, lighting, uh, un- uneven surfaces like stumble, stumbling and tripping, and in- interaction with dogs. And there's a whole bunch of other safety concerns. Uh, priorities seem to be like people like, people like walking a loop trail, which makes a lot of sense. Um, they wanted, they wanted, uh, be- better signage, and that's, that's being informed through the signage and wayfinding plan, which is excellent. And, uh, there was, there were some concerns around highway shoulders, how to make those safer for wa- walking on the highway shoulder, and, uh, and also, um, uh, accessible connections primarily to the, to the waterfront pathway, but in general to other, other areas as well. Um, the waterfront pathway itself is uh, an even grade or whatever, and very nice once you're, once you're there, and very easy to traverse, but it's, it's getting from the ends of the, ends of the avenues or whatever down there is a challenge, and then also from, from the, uh, west end down to the, down to the public beach, there is, uh, i- is challenging, right, so. Just on that note, we, we just developed a, a route and did a rough design on it to, to extend a path from the, from the west end and down, down to the public beach, and then down, and then back up again around the washroom and connects to the end of the sidewalk, or so. That might, so that might solve an issue. Um, the top, top routes that people liked, uh, the, the waterfront walkway and, and the extension that goes, winds around and comes up at the end of Fourth Street, uh, northwester, um. Obviously, the, the downtown areas, uh, Broadway, um. Uh, I, I have an office downtown, but, look, I'm bo- blown away by the, by the amount of people, but also the great, the great comments that you receive about, uh, the look of it, the feel, the flowers are amazing, like, it's, uh, pe- when people come here, they're re- they're really impressed. Everybody wants to, you guys hear it all the time, too. They want, they want to move and live here, but it's like, um, they have to sever their ties, I guess, like some of us did, but, uh. Uh, and then, um, the, the high- highway bypass route that follows the truck route up there, that's a, that's a, uh, part of an old rail grade there, and that's, that's had some challenges. We did a bit of design work on that, and hopefully overcame some of those. Uh, and then people also like, another top route is just people walk quiet, the quiet streets, they, they walk, uh, uh, tenth, tenth, tenth Ave all the way around, and, you know, down to the beach. They walk, uh, Fourth Street here, they walk on the upper, upper bench areas and, um, and, uh, and got in Glen Bank and Bros and stuff like that, so. Okay, uh. Okay, uh, trip, uh, tra- trail types, pardon me, design criteria. Uh, as I said, um, we tried to pull out those universal design, uh, uh, criteria. That, that's basically speaks to having a proper grade, uh, width and s- and surface standards, et cetera, so that it is, uh, universally accessible. Um, and, uh, trail types, there are, there are a number of different trail types. They're, 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 uh, we, we'll talk about it in a minute, they're, they're very well-defined in the report itself. And then each trail type has a standard attached to it, usually has two standards, it has a construction standard and then a, uh, a surfacing standard, uh, construction is, uh, how it's constructed, and then the surfacing is the li- the layers of it, of, uh, aggregate that, that go on top of it, so. Yeah, I don't know if you noticed, but if you, if you go to some nice trails that are aggregate surfaced, a lot of the nicest ones have like a cart path gravel, which is the last few centimeters or a couple of centimeters even on top, which is a uh, crushed rock product typically that has different sizes that can be compacted nicely, and if it's done properly, you basically ride your skinny wheel bike on it or wheelchairs or whatever, so. Uh, that's, that's embedded in a, a lot of those, a lot of the standards. So, yeah, the proposed network has twen- twen- twenty different routes. Uh, the routes are broken into segments. For, for each, for each route, there's a, there's a budget, uh, sort of, um, su- suitable for, for scoping and, uh, suitable for, uh, fu- fundraising and, and prob- probably, uh, grant writing and stuff like that. Uh, and then there, there's an implementation plan, um, and, uh, action plan next steps, so. Technical content, there's, there's two overviews maps, there's one that covers the whole scope area. One's, be one of those in a minute. Uh, and then, then there's, then there's a, what we call multi-plot drawings for the individual routes. Um, and then there's, um, one, yeah, I should just go to the next one, I think. This, this is not the best rendering of it, I have some paper stuff, or the, the digital version is quite clear. Um, anyways, this is the, this is the scope area. Uh, the next one, the next map is a, is sort of the core downtown area. Uh, on, on this, on this map, there's also a sta- standards table, which speaks to the different types of, uh, uh, pathways and the, and the standards. Uh, and lots of, lots of, there's lot, lots of technical content on these, and hopefully they'll be, they'll be quite helpful. Uh, the next, this is a, uh, this is an example of, uh, an individual route. Uh, a route plan, so, uh, this is the one, this is actually the one that goes from uh, connects on the waterfront, kind of the waterfront extension, then ends up at Fourth Street. Uh, and it, it shows, um, anyways, there's some photos here, that this, this, uh, this is some sample cross-sections from a concept design we did. This is a, this is a profile of the existing, uh, trail, and if you walk it, you know, you kind of over slightly uphill, and then there's a huge drop, and then, uh, uh, and then uphill or whatever, this is a connection sort of the Cuscanax River here, that's a nice spot, but, but this up and down is challenging, so it's possible to redesign this and have, uh, I think it turns out to be a maximum si- seven percent grade. Uh, it's, it's a bit of a project, but, uh, not, not a huge project, and that, that would, that would answer, uh, people's concerns about, a lot, a lot of people do not go that way because of that dip or whatever. And there's other people that like the dip. Uh, my, my wife being one of them, so she said, if that trail gets rebuilt, should leave that dip, then and then have have to, that probably be running circles around there, plus. Yeah, next one, this is just another example, this is, this shows that, um, this shows the, uh, a plan to come off of the west end of the waterfront. And then hit, take a right, go down on a nice grade, and then you go parallel to the public beach. And then, um, and then, uh, a sw- switch back at the other, and then you come up on a nice grade and connect to the sidewalk, and you go on the no- north side, just on the north side of the washroom, so that they would be accessible. Uh, so there's, uh, there, there's some renderings, there's a, and there's a, there's a pro- a profile, like a side view showing what that trail is like. This, this one is for, uh, Sixth Avenue, which is sort of the main north. Theoretically, the main nor- north-south spine, uh, show, so that's proposing a, um, this, this is a fairly big job, this is a fairly big project, it proposes, um, a multi-use path on the, on the, uh, east side of, uh, Sixth. Uh, basically connecting downtown with, uh, uh, Esso or Canco. And, and then on the, uh, and that, that would be it, that would be a two-way path. Bike, bikes allowed, like le- less, less bold, uh, cyclists or ones heading, uh, north, and then on the uh, west side of the road, uh, just a, a directional bike lane headed, headed south. Uh, but this, this fi- figure on the side just shows some different, um, different potential configurations for how how the la- lane spacing would work, that sort of thing, so. Uh, yeah, and I mean, this is, this is on the, this is on the, um, par- paralleling, uh, paralleling, uh, bypass route, and it's, there's already an existing trailer, but there's two or three or maybe four spots that are very challenging, so. This, uh, this shows way of, shows ways of redesigning around those and making that an accessible route as well, so. Next one. Yeah, there's, 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 in the appendices, there's quite a few, there's sort of a, there's a typical drawing library that you could pull from for, it, for, uh, building contracts and stuff, there's, and there's trail standards tables. Uh, next one. So, the next steps. Uh, I think, uh, the, the, the plan needs to be communicated out to the public and out to potential funders, and, uh, start, start the talk with potential funders. Um, that, to, to i- to implement this, i- is, uh, is, um, we'll, we'll, we'll take some, uh, dedicated and focused hu- human capital, just to coordinate it and write grants, get the funding, uh, and do the implementation, so. That could be, that could be funding, uh, funding existing staff, could be hiring, could be a, could be a contract type of deal, but it, it probably, probably merits, uh, a person doing that. Uh, at some point, review the implementation priorities. We gave, we gave it our best, uh, uh, shot, but the, 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 these will change over time. And also, there, there's a, there's a funding table in there that And also, there there's a, there's a funding table in there that this uh. Uh grant funding sources, so that could be reviewed and augmented as things, things change. Uh and develop some funding partnerships I'm talking about with. Uh private uh private developers, citizens, uh First Nations, uh different levels of government. And then uh I think a key point to go forward, apply for implementation funding. Um and there there's a Ministry of Transport and uh Transit. Uh active transportation implementation uh funding that closes in September there, so. You, we, uh us, the community would be good shape, I think with this plan to apply for that. And then obviously the ne- the last step is just to tender and initiate the the projects as they come up. So that a lot of this stuff I already said, but um really it will make a more livable community, active transportation and have a good network. Universal design will pull pull in more participants. Uh the plan being modular will make it efficient to to go to implementation, more efficient. Um and it would al- it will it will also allow build out in a in a str- strategic. Strategic fashion that is based on uh you know uh community priorities, which I said can change and will change. If if the trails are built to good standards, if they will be reliable, they'll last longer. It will be easier to budget for and probably require less future maintenance. Um and in the in the big picture, will will help the environment by reducing vehicle use and. And having le- less uh greenhouse gases as a result, so. So that the 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 trail infrastructure, the active transportation network, it it. Intersects in positive ways with the lifestyles of. People who live here, people who visit and it could be a legacy for many years to come, I think. And uh it'll it 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 will attract visitors and and uh it will greatly enhance the lifestyles of residents. But they're already so.
Thanks, Hugh. Work you did there for which you're a staff.
We did, we did together. That was a big project.
It was, amazing. It pretty well covered everything what I saw there when I read that. Everything you could think of it and it's nice it'll fit in with all the other uh master plans that we're doing.
Yeah.
So that's a key.
Yeah, we definitely tried to do that, so hopefully it all works out.
Any questions from council? Council McLean call.
Uh thanks and through the mayor, um like mayor said. Did a great work, everybody following around, this is one of the. If the best report I've seen from a consultant for work that we're trying to do in. Many years, um it's detailed, it's thorough, it has a local knowledge of of the trails and like the. The the fact that you've gone through in depth through all of it is just amazing. Um so. I'm I'm not going to repeat all the benefits of active transportation. I think that's great that we're pursuing that and I think um. If it helps us achieve our strategic, specific strategic priorities because they're in our strategic priorities. So all all around is just fantastic. I love the universal design. Uh that's that's a really important thing to incorporate. Um anyway, I could go on. I do have one question. Uh we've, well, I personally received some feedback online about connecting Upper Nacasp to downtown. And I saw that I I I mean, that was a lot to read, but. Anyway, could you speak a bit to connecting up- uplanders or uptowners into town?
So prob- probably the. The there there's where the topography comes into it. There's actually in the report, there's a, there's a typical cross section that starts at the beach and ends at the. North end of Alexander Road and it shows. Shows what we already know, like it's a gently sloping bench and then you have that steep scarpe area. And then and then it's slope slopes more or less gently up the rest of the way, so. The challenge is that scarf and it runs all the way along here. Um there there's already a, there's already a cut at. Decent grade through it, uh like two percent grade or whatever, it's a re- or three percent, two or three percent, I can't remember. It's a old rail line that comes down. That's not the quickest route necessarily, so um. But uh sure sure to building another one at two percent that goes the oth- other way or something, should be a big project and. Encumbered by stuff like private property and all the rest of this stuff. Uh that that probably is the best route is to is to fix that up and then um that that would. That would realistically take care of people that are um. Are um. Are cha- are challenged by the the steeper connections, because there are a number of steeper connections along there. There's one. At the end of uh first second um second street. That goes up the hill there. That's that's used, it's a bit rough. It would come down by the hospital. It's not, you can't, you can only do so much with a grade, but you can improve the surfacing, so it's better. You can improve other things, maybe like the lighting. Uh you can improve the um. You can, you can make it more uh wa- waterproof against erosion events or whatever by better water control. Uh that that's 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 one way. Uh there's there's uh another another connection through um through uh. Forget the name of this street, my brain doesn't work out. Uh it's it's a shorter connection. There's a piece, there's a uh um. There there's a piece of uh municipal property there that could build, be built out into a little park or just left as is or whatever. Comes right through there and connects on to.
Columbia Crescent.
Yeah, on the Columbia Crescent there and uh and um. There there's one other connection, but it was through private private land there, so we we didn't, we didn't sort of deal with that.
There's also the potential tunnel under the car route.
Yeah, uh actually, that was a suggestion from Ministry of Transport uh. Is is uh a square tunnel and you see him uh. See him in other areas, go under the highway, so you go up uh third, third Ave, at the end of Third Ave. Rebuild that rebuild that last section that's kind of kind of closed off and it 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 improve it, it's a little bit steep, but then have a. Have an underpass on the highway there. And uh and then on the top, on the top side, there's, you know, it's a, it's a sort of a steep sandy hill there. But it is, it is, uh it goes up steep and then it goes flat, so it is possible to even out that grade quite a bit and. We did a test, the test design, doesn't bring it down to like two or three percent, but it's like six percent or seven. Seven percent, something like that versus beverage is now eighteen, twenty percent. So, yeah, it's just those types of little incremental improvements. That's not a little improvement though, because just to get under the highway, it's a cou- couple hundred or two hundred fifty thousand bucks or whatever. It's it's grand onion, you can apply for it and I think it's found better, somebody else is going to do it, so. Yeah.
This might be a dumb question.
Don't know.
Well, it might be, um but and it might not be within the scope of this report, which is an amazing report. Thank you so much. So a lot of our residents here are like older.
Yeah.
So for uh some of the comments that I have heard from people is from maybe the more vintage. Age people is that the washrooms are few and far between, so where there's all kinds and I know later on. In this agenda, we are speaking about no tinkling on the ground. So I'm just wondering if there's any provision for a washroom or.
I think there, yeah, there has to be. We didn't address that much.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
But. Like, things that are important are washrooms. Ben- benches at a certain spacing distance, sort of scientifically proven based on age and ability or whatever. Uh um. Bike stands.
Yeah.
Coffee shops.
Yeah.
Uh you know, all all this, all this type of stuff is so. It's it's all, it's all part of making the whole package better.
Yeah, for sure. I I looked for it. I didn't see it in the size, just wondering, I thought probably wasn't included in that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. So one, I wasn't sure, the government hill.
Yeah, okay, that's a good possible.
I know, I did I see that in anywhere in there, because what I'm finding.
Yeah.
I come down the hill, the government hill, come down there. I see somebody in a scooter.
It's.
And on the wrong side, way down, coming around the corner, there's vehicles.
Yeah.
And that's the only sign we can go, we can't go on the other side, it's too steep, so we'd have to dig into that.
Okay, so so the philosophy there was to, not that we didn't want to deal with it, but. The the philosophy there is to find it, find different routes on the on either side that are easier to deal with, because. If you put a, if you put a nice pathway up there, it's still going to be steep, nasty. It's gonna be, gonna have water issues probably. It's gonna be, I think, dangerous and then. So now you've built infrastructure and you've attracted more people to your infrastructure, so maybe it's creating a worse problem, it's. It it's better to, it's better to find other solutions, like for example, at hot the hospital uh. People could, if they're coming down, they could cut over on Second. The past my street or avenue, Dale Dale McKay Street, there that one.
Second Street northeast.
Second Street, hook on to uh hook on to that ho- that hospital um uh. Shortcut there and probably have a have a bit better experience there, right? Then that one, that one could actually in time be built out, so it was much better, but it would it would um. Uh the one I'm talking about is at the end of se- if you go up Second here and then cr- climb up the hill past Nelson Avenue or whatever. That could be improved quite a bit by. Curving and putting switchbacks in, but the only way to review it is to take a bite out of the pro- uh the sp- Spicer property next door there. So if there was some sort of a partnership or gi- give then. Uh and some dollars, you could make that quite a bit better. I think that's actually, that's actually a much better way to go than to. Spend a bunch of money on the on the government, they'll work and then. Encourage people to go that way instead. I think it'd be much better, you're away from traffic. It could be well, it could be like really nice, yeah. It's more of a wood- woodsy experience, so.
No, I just know that's a dangerous one, because.
It's.
What I witnessed.
It's terrible, actually.
I watched that little scooter go down the wrong side and like.
Yeah, so.
Just a matter of time.
It's uh, it's one of the, it's one of the issues that we looked at and we just decided that there's no. There's no easy solution to that and maybe, maybe it's better to look for a solution elsewhere, like. Ne- next door to it or whatever, right, for the future, yeah.
All right, well, great job to your, your, all your counterparts.
Thanks. Thanks uh, thanks for taking a leap of faith with a local. Contractor consultant, et cetera. It's much appreciated. It's a, it's a great project for us too, so.
Yeah, thanks again to all you did. Gee, we're in G, right? Uh recommendations that the July twenty twenty five monthly task reports be received for information. Counselor, do you have anything?
Not at this time, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I do not, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. He may go after counsel with fair and hope, and I don't have anything to say at this time. Yeah, thank you, uh counselor.
Uh thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um I was just reminded that it was a busy month, so I'll go through my report. Um I had the um, I put a little crest in there in in my report. I had the surprise and and let's call it honor of going to uh. The air cadet squadron in um Nelson, the five, six, one squadron for their annual uh grad- like graduation parade. Um I was in air cadets when I was a kid, so it was, it was like nearly thirty years ago, so. Uh it was really neat to go uh there on behalf of uh the regional district. Um. Yeah, so that was one of the more more fun things that I got to do over the month. Um I also attended um. I was invited to go to Keeping it Rural Conference in Kelowna and I got to go with some colleagues of mine. Um there's a lot of notes there, I won't go through them all, but uh it was a really. It was interesting to have gone to FCM just a month or a few weeks earlier where there were. Two to three thousand delegates and then to go from across the country and then to go to Keeping it Rural where there were maybe. I don't know, a hundred? Something like that, and they were all rural B C people, so that was really interesting. They had some really great presentations. Um Ken Coats, no relation to the Coats family here, but Ken Coats gave two fantastic presentations. Um a professor from, I forget the university, he teaches that, but he was excellent. Um and then there's some really interesting stuff on rural healthcare and rural forestry and wildfire and. All kinds of stuff, so I encourage other people to attend that event because I believe it is annual. Um and I got to speak on a panel as well, that's why I was invited. And what else? Um Selkirk College. Was invited to go to, they had two sessions, um and I think, Mr. Mayor, you went to the one here in the custom. I couldn't, I was busy that day, so I went to the one in Caslow. Uh and it was, they're facing some serious challenges, obviously, because both of those uh learning centers are closing within a year. Um so we had a good, I don't know, three, four hour session about. History and ideas that they can, they can take back to their organization to help. Then the near and medium term future for for Selkirk and rural communities um. And I think it was done on fairly short notice, so I, what they told me anyway, or our group, is that. They will be doing more public engagement, so I encouraged everybody to to go and talk to them. It's all well and good to have Facebook conversations, but go talk to them. Because they will take that view that they're looking for. Uh VCI DRO, we had our regular spring update um on Columbia and Duncan Dam operations. Again, lots of detailed notes there, but um I think the main thing is um. We are looking at another year of, we've had several years of drought. Um and this year we have particularly low slow snowpack, which obviously means there's less water melting into the reservoirs into the system. Uh and one thing that kind of struck stuck with me throughout this was. Drought just doesn't affect that year and doesn't reset every winter. If you have drought, particularly several years of drought, it has cumulative impacts. So there's just increasingly less water in this system and you can imagine for a hydroelectric system that has some pretty, pretty negative effects. Um but all things considered, not not too much new there, uh several meetings with um. The with AKPLG, including a meeting in person, H Preston, uh of the new executive. Um resolutions and I chair the advocacy committee and we have some. Exciting advocacy pieces coming up, uh and not just at UVCN convention, but hopefully throughout the year. And then Regional District, uh lots of Regional District meetings. Um oh, and the interesting, the the exciting. Quote unquote exciting thing is um R E C K has launched a newsletter. Uh I put the link in my report, uh or you can just uh Google it and I encourage everybody to sign up for it. I believe the first one has already been released, uh and it's um. I think it's good so far, so if you're at all interested in what's happening uh in in regional government, uh sign up for that. Uh West Transit Services Committee, uh where we were talking about. How to apportion um costs for services shared across different regions and in between also different regional districts. So you can imagine if anybody likes spreadsheets or calculus or otherwise complicated math, it gets very complicated. Um so anyway, that's one of the. That so and trying to balance the apportionment formulae with the value of transit. So it's, it's an, it's a art and a science kind of mashed together. Happy to talk offline with anybody who wants to know more about that. Uh we had a workshop, we should have two workshops in June. One was focused on First Nations relations, um kind of an update from the provincial folk about. Or provincial staff, I should say, uh about that. Um and something that I've been pushing for at Regional District is an updated budget process. Uh and they, to their credit, have taken my advice and we are updating the budget process, so we had a work. Uh, and they, to their credit, have taken my advice and we are updating the budget process, so we had a workshop on that. And then we got to the regular board meeting, um. So the, I, I haven't put this in my previous reports, but I just noted in there that these are highlights that are relevant to the castle, obviously, that's an eight hour meeting. Uh, or can be eight hours, so, um. Yeah, some interesting stuff in there, I think. Uh, I got to attend a discussion about the Kootenay Lake Partnership. Which is something that we aren't part of, but I was brought in as vice chair, and I would just want to say that, uh. Thank goodness that we're not part of it because it's very dysfunctional, and I feel for the people that are in that partnership because. It makes me appreciate functional governance situations. We, so the second workshop was a reminder, a refresher for elected officials on how to handle E O Cs and, uh. What to do during emergencies, et cetera, and we did an all recreation committee as well, um. And it was, it's maybe a talk for offline, but it was very interesting to see how. Large recreation facilities handle bookings, fees, asset management. And then kind of projecting that onto our own, because it just gives us some perspective. And these places are very busy, whereas we are less so. And then finally, uh, three, uh, someone by appointments to our regional district committees, like. What was once the Central Kootenay Food Policy Council has now renamed itself the Kootenay Food Council. Um, and I realized I misspelled the acronym because the acronym is actually K F C, which was funny. I thought I gave them irasma about that a few times. Uh, so we did their A G M and we went to Salmo and, uh. I had another meeting that morning, so I missed the first part, but they got to tour the compost facility in Salmo, which I heard very good things about. And we had a lovely meeting and excellent lunch at the golf course in Salmo, which was. Forgive me, but, but surprise, and a great surprise. Um, and again, more details there if anybody is interested in the food policy work. Um, ongoing, um, Columbia River Treaty Local Governments Committee meetings, I got one this morning as well. And then lastly, the, I met with, uh, the Regional Innovation Chair in Rural Economic Development, uh, Dr. Sarah Breen, who. Uh, many of us know, um, and just some updates on that, so I'll stop there, thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick question, um. The Columbia River Treaty, I, I'm sure there's not much you can share, but is there anything you can share from there?
Um, through the mayor of what specifically?
That you could share. Staff this, uh.
I think, okay, through the mayor, I think what is public knowledge is that. Um, the best buddy, Elon Musk and Doge. Part of what Doge did was inst- uh, start a review, I think, of the State Department. In the United States, and because of that review, they have put a pause on all of the, all the work they were doing. So the Agreement of Principle that we have come to with the United States is on hold. I have heard that the president. Is aware of the Columbia River Treaty, which is unfortunate, because I believe he would use that in the ongoing negotiations with the Prime Minister Kennedy. And our federal government, um, so my personal opinion is that it's not looking positive. I think we will probably have to start from scratch again, and I'm going to go in the line here and say that. The Biden administration was probably more amenable to a more reasonable solution. A more equitable solution between the two countries. And then my, and then the, the one last comment I make is that, similar to what I said before about the update. They, the, the climate change. Impacts on the Columbia system. Are increasing and becoming more severe, so the, the, you know, the la- the lack of snow, the increase of rain. The increase of hard rain events, like all, everything all at once. Um, and I'm not arguing whether it's manmade or not, I'm just saying that the climate is changing and we're seeing it borne out in the data, so. When we talk about stormwater systems later, I think that's really important, because we have to be able to say that, so, anyway, that's it.
Thank you, thanks.
And, um, I did, did receive a, a email from a resident worried about our lake level dropping, our beach is almost gone. Their booms are just, you can almost look back to them now. And asking if we can move them back in twenty twenty-three, it was brought forward to council and staff and, and the past time. They said no, because right below it is a big flat area and broke it that one time, it was called the Big Ben Sawmill, that's right there. It's big flat and there's sharp objects and everything else, and try to move those boomsticks into a muddy area and everything else. Isn't going to work, so we're gonna be looking at the same thing as we have the last two years, three years, so, which is a shame. Um, and maybe we have to look at a different place, alternative lake drops, or another beach area, I'm sure. Right, do, do have some ideas, anyway, uh, carry on to my report, uh, June twelfth, thirteenth. Had the opportunity to meet with the I L C A and the Snipes Confederacy. Who were paddling from rebelstoke to kettle poles with a group of more than thirty youth and adults. So, uh. So the, the leader of the group was Shelley Boyd, um, so we, uh, they stayed in our municipal campground, the overflow. They loved it there, uh, it was raining that day, so it was a good opportunity to visit our amazing Aralax historical archives. It's a treasure for our community, uh, everyone in that group was blown away, what we have there, just blown away. They have never seen such a collection of archives and, and studies and. And that all comes from Sharon Montgomery and the historical artists, because she had did an amazing history of keeping track of everything, so. Um, Shelley Boyd, uh, we were all supposed to go to the museum and also visit the, uh. Seniors Hall or the Caribou, visit, she stayed there all day, she just couldn't get away. Because there were so many stories, so many writings and so much history there, that she just stayed there all day. Um, again, the rest went down to the museum, again, blown away by our museum and our artifacts that we have there. Uh, you can actually go there and actually joke about up, who was a teacher at the time, um. Would be in the, um, mechanical and, and the. Industry area, she, they, uh, they built a replica of the, uh, of the Snipes canoe. And, but it got so old it started falling apart, so they just had to take pictures of it, but it's amazing what they did, so anyway. Again, they were blown away and, um, they were really excited to be here, uh. Attended the secondary graduations ceremony, bringing heartfelt greetings and congratulations on the delicious council in closing. In closing, I just said, no matter where your journey leads, whether you choose to stay rooted in this beautiful place or set off to explore the world. You are always part of this community. Um, also, local industry open house, uh, I attended the local industry open house as a representative. Well, before I knew it, uh, there was a fire call and I ended up being the representative for the Nick House Fire Department. Because there was nobody left at the table, had to go there, but I was representing the Aralax Caribou Society and NAPOR, so. Um, great job what they did there to present our local industry and open house. Uh, and the joint resource recovery committee meeting, um. I don't know if you know, if you go, if you go there, they've got, uh, what's called a controlled scavenging at each select facilities, they have a little area that you can look at. You've got fifteen minutes to look at something there, but there's certain items you can't bring, um, but you will get billed as you go in for, for bringing them. So, anyway. But I need, I think we need to look at a whole different aspect of that, I think there's a way of, instead of doing something like that, there might be a, a way of doing like, um. Oh, oh, an area where you can bring used items, so. And clear the Okanagan, they have restore, own, restore stores and things like this, but I think there's an opportunity to do there. Uh, they're also looking at, um. Request for expression of interest, seek proposals for alternative management of commitment wood waste and legacy wood chips. So right now, um, they have, starting now, you have to separate the wood chips, the wood. It can have nails in it, but it can't have paint or anything else, that's a separate pile. And the other items, that's wood with paint or anything else goes into, then, on, on a higher volume. Cost of the mixed woods. So they're looking at ways to, to use the wood waste, um. They gave you some other options, what other communities are doing. Uh, we don't have a biomass plant, so it works great for, do have a biomass plant, it works great. All in it is too expensive, so we have to figure out ways to do it. Also, I sit on the V C Rural Health Network Committee Implementation Committee, um. So right now, the V C Rural Health Network is calling the, oh, on the province to, of V C to include a permanent. Fifty million year rural health equity fund in their budget of twenty twenty-six. This fund would support medical travel assistance, local healthcare worker recruitment, community-led healthcare, education and outreach. Out of pocket costs, the rural residents traveling for healthcare talks, the rural mass plan. Patients, community engagement, gap analysis, strategic community engagement, rural people face real barriers every day. It's time for targeted meaningful in- investments to close the gap and build a healthcare future for all of us. So the purpose of the fund is to support targeted initiatives that close rural healthcare access gaps aligned with the principles of the Canada Health Act. And administrated through cloud and cross sexual, secular governments. The fund is intended to support new and strengthen programs and address rural healthcare access gaps and is not intended to serve as a general distribution mechanism. For existing programs or funding streams, the focus will be on targeting health, high impact investments that generate clear outcomes. And system improvements. Another one that came across, uh, interior health and now are integrating security with healthcare, they actually. Um, it's something that, uh, we, we'll be talking at U V C M, um, security officers at our Aralax Hospital, um. So right now, they've hired nine. They do, they hired nine, um. Interior health is just, and to do rational security officers, programs to nine hospitals, including Salmon Arm Burn in Oliver. These officers are specially trained in trauma-informed care. You see, de-escalation and cultural safety and they work alongside medical teams, not separate from them. So there's a great opportunity when we go to your V C M to bring this forward that we need it for the castle also. This is the kind of care focused on security we need here in the castle, we hear this all the time, um. So like I said, for years, our local customer, Aralax Hospital has been asking for better protection, security on our hospital. This situation is not, is only getting worse, our doctors, nurses, we stand often alone, work at night, feeling unsafe and unsupported. Medical health crisis, eviction and homelessness are real challenges, but our rural healthcare teams shouldn't have to fear for their safety while doing their jobs. And with limited R C M P availability, urgent help can't always arrive in time. Uh, also, constating as councilman, I did a visit the Nick House Learning Center, uh, School District Ten, and many other people were there. Faculties, uh, they came through it, um, I did do a presentation with them, saying what I think could be done. Uh, we're going to be meeting again, there's other groups that are interested in listening to, maybe looking at different opportunities to make this a community hub. With all sorts of opportunities to work together, so stay tuned. Uh, June twenty, W K B R D meeting, um, attended with special guest Brittany Anderson, Minister of State for Local Governments, Rural Communities. M L A Kootenay Monashie, Steve Melzerett, Parliamentary Secretary, Rural Development, M L A Kootenay Monashie. And M L A Du- Dugel Wilson, founder of Sumilakine. Uh, Susan Brown is going to, her tenure as President and Chief Executive Officer, Susan will now focus on supporting the organization in its transition. In advance of her retirement, so we, we have an opportunity to see her last time at U V C M and bring forward our concerns. So just one other thing, um, I just want to thank, uh, staff, um, for our amazing Canada Day event. We couldn't have done it without you guys, so I just wanted to leave everyone a few, great, great job, so. I heard nothing but great reviews from everyone, so, and it was a busy, busy day. So, and that's it for me. Sorry for trying, it's true. Any questions? Fees and charges amendment, recommendation that the fees and charge means the bylaw number seven twenty-five, twenty-eight twenty-five be adopted as presented. Government motion bring those forward, councillor Edwards seconded, councillor Penoysen, George Jones. No questions? All in favor? Good neighbor bylaw. Uh, recommendation that the good neighbor amended bylaw number seven fifty-three, twenty twenty-five be given first, second and third readings. Have a motion to bring these forward, councillor Penoysen seconded, councillor Edwards, questions?
Also, good, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the mayor's staff. Um, I just have a question in regards to, like, the wood outside, so. Because a lot of people heat their homes with wood and in the summer they're piling up wood for the winter. So that, would that be an issue or is it how the wood's stored or?
That's a good question, um, it's not likely something that we're going to target, because, yeah, people do have that. You know, if people were to follow fire smart principles, they shouldn't be having, uh, wood stacked against their, their buildings. Um, but we know in reality that not everybody's gonna follow that. I think if we were running into a situation where there was a great big pile of firewood just laying there and there's dry grass, grass around it or. Ways for it to, to spread, then that would be an area of concern that we might deal with. Uh, but, uh, generally speaking, if somebody has it neatly stacked and everything else looking pretty good, we're probably okay.
Thank you. That, that was probably one of the questions I had.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, uh, through the mayor, as always, my question is how do we communicate this with?
Uh, so that's a good question, uh, generally speaking, um, this is nothing new. We already had provisions in the bylaw that allowed us to. Deal with this in a roundabout way, so it's not like this is anything new for people to understand. Um, we will be providing more information, actually, if you. Take a look at our Facebook page, we're starting to put out, um. One-page primers on our traffic streets and sidewalks by law updates we did, so that's something that, uh, will do with this bylaw as well. Um, and of course, uh, this final is gonna be revised entirely, so, but we will be getting this message out to people about. Uh, lawn grasses and whatnot, and we're likely gonna send some letters out pretty quickly, just letting some people know that. They've got to that point where it's starting to get to be, uh, a bit of a fire hazard.
Anyone else?
Just a really quick statement supplemental, um, through the mayor, I have noticed a lot more on social media than the village, so I appreciate that, thanks.
So one more, um, wood chips, cedar wood chips around people's property, that seems to be a very fancy landscaping item. But it is a very fire hazard too.
It's, so I, I spoke to the fire smart coordinator about that, and he said that, generally speaking, if people are irrigating. It's not as much of an issue, uh, because it's on the ground, it does stay damp. Um, where it starts getting to being an issue is, um. If it's up against a, a building and the building has, say, like, wood or something, or, or tall grass is growing up against it. That's where you would start running to a bigger issue, uh, would be that essence, but again, the way this is, uh, the way this written. It's written in such a way that it is up for the experts to take a look and, and decide whether or not this is an issue, so being the fire chief and by the smart. Uh, coordinator and then, uh, I, I can follow up, uh, when they deem it as being a hazard.
Any other questions? All in favor? Bylaw notice enforcement, recommendation that bylaw notice enforcement, the bylaw number seven fifty-four, twenty twenty-five. Be given first, second and third readings, have a motion to bring these forward, councillor Edwards, questions?
Thank you, through the mayor's staff, I'm just, um, is, this is also being reviewed for an entire.
Thank you. Through the mayor's staff, I'm just, this is also being reviewed for an entire rewrite? Is that correct?
So the bylaw notice enforcement bylaw will be, I wouldn't say a complete review, but there would be a bit of an overhaul when we redo the Good Neighbor bylaw. But i- in reality, there's, there's not an awful lot to really amend with the, with the bylaw notice enforcement bylaw, just to review the fines.
Supplemental, thank you. So there's a, just a few questions I have about this particular bylaw. Six forty, abandon a vehicle on the street or public right of way. The fine for doing that seems quite small to me, considering you have to probably have that towed away compared to you know, be- being a nuisance or uttering a curse word or something. So I was just curious about that. I was also curious about how you determine things like offensive owners from a property, like there's a lot of things that could be determined, determined offensive. Permit accumulation of destruction or demolition waste, those kind of things, like I guess you would look over past that if they're currently in construction or demolition. I'm just wondering, there's cause noise which disrupts, those are somewhat subjective, and I'm just wondering if those kinds of, if the clarification will be made more clear when we go forward with the the revision of the other Good Neighbor bylaw.
Through the mayor, yes. So when we talked about redoing the bylaws, that was one of the things that I, when we talked about our bylaw revision plan, that was one of the things that I had identified was that there were provisions within the Good Neighbor bylaw that we were not even sure that could even be enforced. Nor do we really want to enforce it, that, you know, does it make sense that we have something in there that's, if somebody utters a vulgarity that they can be given a bylaw ticket, like that's never gonna happen. So things like that definitely need to be looked at, and they need to be basically taken out of the Good Neighbor bylaw as far as I'm concerned, but that's for council to decide when we bring it forward to you. As for the fines, all we did here was up the fines a little bit because it didn't make sense to to have fines that were like, they would actually work out to be about seventy-five dollars. It would actually cost the village more money for us to issue the ticket than it would be to collect that. So it was really more just a stopgap measure. And then lastly, you had asked about a, an abandoned vehicle on a public street or right of way. We don't pay the towing. The towing is paid by the person who owns the vehicle when they want to pull it out, so we don't have to cover that cost. And if they don't declare their vehicle or pay for it to be released from impounding, it actually becomes the property of the owner record.
Thank you. Of course, that's the case. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification, and I do look forward to looking at some of those and and cleaning it up a little bit.
It'll be a different bylaw.
Any other questions? Oh, noise bylaw, it is from Saturday to Friday, is it seven to seven, seven A M. to seven P M.?
So the, I believe noise is talked about in the Good Neighbor bylaw. I don't recall, it's, it has to learn. The bylaw sets hours, but at the same time, it also states that at any time during the day if someone is making noise that is bothering the enjoyment of other people, that it's a bylaw offense. So I, I can't really answer that question. Because technically, it's anytime.
There is a point for it.
But I think the bylaw does say from seven A M. to seven P M. And Sunday eight A M. you can start.
Or unless it bothers anybody at any time, yes. The other thing too is that the ability for us to be able to enforce a noise complaint, not only in, in Counselor Canoyes, and I brought this up earlier, it is quite subjective. We don't carry around noise measuring devices with us. I'm sure we'd need an app for a cellphone, but we could. But we would have to state in our bylaw what is considered a noise that is over a certain, like what threshold would be. And then we would also have to determine where, you know, at what distance would that noise now be considered over a certain threshold? So there's, it's, yeah, not, not great.
And to stop, do you still need two complaints for, for noise?
Noise.
There are noise.
Yes. So that kind of complaint would require, as per council's policy, it would require two complaints for us to move forward with it. Unless it was a sound that was so loud that it was damaging people's ears, then we could deal with it right away.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Got me.
Any further questions? All in favor? We are high tree.
J one.
Which one?
J one.
J. Risk assessment. Recommendation that the risk assessment of unsupervised use of the squash courts be received for information. Have a motion to bring that forward. Counselor Penoysen seconded. And some questions on this? I just got one, if nobody else has. Give them a key. That key opens everything. You know?
Can be keyed just for specific doors.
Okay, not for the main door?
It would be, yeah, the main door into the lobby, but not for the other doors leading off of the lobby.
Yeah, so the main door, though, is used for everything, right, inside their community, isn't it?
The, there's a lock that's keyed differently on the set of doors in the arena. So the way it's set up with the hierarchy of keys is that that particular door is is just for that door.
A separate door. Okay.
Yeah, it looks like the same set of doors, but it's a, yeah, special door.
Okay, that was another question there. Any other questions? On paper? Day two. Well, this is the one that go forward, the guts. That is motion J two. Recommendation that the residents in the castle wish to honor the memory of Canadian veterans and pedestrian safety, and that a crosswalk at Eighth Avenue Northwest and Broadway Street leading to the Senate town would provide a meaningful, invisible tribute, improve pedestrian safety, and enhance community engagement. And that staff be directed to investigate and report back on the feasibility costs and design options for a memorial crosswalk at Eighth Avenue Northwest and Broadway Street, including potential funding sources and public consultation options. So I do ask, I know there's questions, maybe I'll start. So this came to me from Harvey Chouax, the Royal Canadian Legion of Branch Twenty. Brought this forward as an idea. He was in Trail and saw this one, we have, he's in Trail. Something like this. So he wondered how we get this started, and I said, well, I can do a notice motion, then funding. He started right away looking at different options to fund it, and he, they also wish to work with staff to help fund it. And I see in the audience is Lisa Dome, who actually, I did send the information on to the C E O, who wishes to work with staff and to find funding and ideas to what it may look like and bring it back to work together with staff. And I think it's, this is a great opportunity for our village and to commemorate our veterans. And it would be a, I like where it's going to be. This was their suggestion where they wanted it. So I think it's a great idea. So anyway, that's my questions. Also, McQuarren Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would say that more pedestrian safety on the agenda, so yay for that.
Sorry.
More pedestrian safety. It just, it keeps getting highlighted lately. No, I think it's a great idea. My, most of my family is military, and I've lived on bases and grew up in legion halls and all that. And like I said earlier, it was New York vets, so I am happy to support this because I think it's a relatively simple project. I do have a bit of a process question, though. It's, I mean, respectfully to the things that have been emerging lately, I think there's a lot of things that come up, have come up lately as notices of motion. And they're not exactly emergent issues, like they're not exigent, urgent emergency problems. And I, I raise that because we just had our annual report last meeting, and none of the items on it work completely. And our staff has limited capacity. We have limited resources. So I, at some point, I would like for council to have a discussion about how we go about triaging things and not just chasing the next shiny object and invest in longer-term projects and get things done, like the, the Connect the Cast report that we talked about earlier. Stormwater management coming up is next. Not a sexy thing to talk about, but it's incredibly important, especially for the long-term benefit to the community. So I'm all for, for this, maybe because I'm biased because of my history, but I think in the near future, before the end of the term, we, maybe it's not a policy discussion, but I think we should have a discussion about how we prioritize our staff time and their workload.
So that, I'll just give you a little history on this. This came last year and the year before, but it never went anywhere. Brought to me and I said, with funding, they look at different ways, and now they're willing to do the funding themselves. And even the work themselves, if they have to, to help the staff. So there's great opportunity to work with, work with them, and they would do it all. So I think, to me, it's, it's a priority. I think in memory of our fallen comrades, I think this is something that's really needed. And especially for our community, for fallen people that have left our community and gone. Anyway, that's my opinion.
There's not many true acts left.
Well, no comments, please. You can speak it after. All right. Okay, any further questions? Also.
We just need someone to move and second the motion.
We'll get seconded, Counselor Edwards. Any further questions? All in favor? Carrie. Day two, climate adaptive community. Recommendations that council directs staff to apply to the Columbia Basin Trust Climate Adapted Community Spaces Program for a hundred thousand dollars for a stormwater management plan. Have a motion to bring that forward. Counselor Penoysen seconded. Counselor McQuarren Paul, questions?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would just want to say I love the idea of using natural assets to mitigate stormwater. It's something that's been coming up at conferences lately, natural assets as a more effective buffer for, for things like this. And I, my question through the mayor's staff is if we are going to pursue the root of natural, natural assets as infrastructure, do we have a mechanism to incorporate that into our asset management plan?
The simple answer is yes.
Yeah. Good thanks.
Other questions? All in favor? Carrie. And that council directs staff to apply for the Infrastructure Planning Grant Program for a ten thousand dollar for a stormwater management plan. Motion to bring that forward. So Edwards seconded. That's some questions. All in favor? Carrie. And that council directs staff to apply for any other grants that become available for a stormwater management plan. Have a motion to bring that one forward. Also, McQuarren Paul, seconded. Counselor Edwards, questions? So I think this is a great idea. So I've learned a lot lately during these wild, wild storms we've had, and but I didn't realize, I would like to know if, if staff could let me know where, or share with us where all our stormwater drains are. I know we have, probably had one on Main Street, had one going down Mouse Avenue. But I know the rest of the area, like, like other areas, there just seems to be culverts or well rings with a thing over them and rock around it, and the stormwater goes in there and it fills up and it needs cleaning. We need to join all the, if we're going to do a master plan, I'd like to know where the stormwater drains actually are that the village has, that they all connect.
So our official community plan has a map of all of our infrastructure, although it's not a hundred percent accurate. It does show where all the different stormwater systems are. What you're also referring to, though, are just infiltration galleries, so they're basically, well, they're, they're rock pits is what they're called. A lot of our rock pits probably are fifteen, twenty years of age or older, and so they're well past their lifespan. The village has not done a very good job of maintaining those over the last ten to fifteen years. So as a result, most of them are completely failed. So they need to be redug, replaced, and part of the idea of the plan is looking at where they should be placed within the community as well, because there's probably some areas that we haven't captured that need to be taken care of, or there's some areas where it needs, where it needs more. The goal here is not to move everything into, say, like a grapey culvert and spit it out somewhere. It's exceptionally expensive infrastructure for us to create. Instead, what we're looking for is ways to pound the water into the ground as, as efficient as possible, which means also creating features that allow the water to collect, hold, and infiltrate into the ground in a more controlled manner.
And, yeah, and also, you know, just, just witnessed some of the property owners where it's really, really with the property, the highways up here, and the properties in the lowest center, that's where all the water's going to go. But some people have gone out and done an amazing initiative on their own. They've shocked, one, one, one owner that went to visit during that flood. She had two, two of those cement rings. They're well things on two of them, and with rock around it. But even without a massive storm, it still filled that one up, and then she had another pipe going into another one, and it still filled up. There was so much water coming from the highways that it just filled everything up. But, you know, I gotta give her, give them credit. Some, some of the, some of the community residents know of this, and actually, I saw another one. And I've just witnessed, I'm just walking down the roads, and I can see where low areas are and what they've done on their own initiative. So I think it's great, but it'd be neat to, to let people know because you are in a low area, you're, you're responsible for your water. So, and a lot of them have taken that initiative, so I thought that would be great.
Yeah, so part of the planning can be looking at the topography of the, of the village, so we know where the low spots are. It's, it's pretty it's, it's widely known where the low parts are, but you, you touched on an interesting point, and it's really important the public is aware of this. They are responsible for water that comes onto their property, even if it comes off of their roads. It may feel unfair, but that is the fact that they have to manage water that comes onto their property and find ways to deviate it from their own, from their own buildings. It's their responsibility. So everyone is encouraged to do that and, and build those things. So it's good those people were being proactive. You know, one thing maybe we could look at as a staff is that if there's any you know, designs out there for, you know, making rock pits, we could share them with people so that they'd be able to put them in their property if that was appropriate. But that's something I have to talk to Kevin about some other time.
Any other questions? All in favor? Day three. Climate adapted community. Recommendation that council directs J four, and this, oh, yeah. All for a special meeting. Recommendation that council meeting also, that council special meeting be held virtually in July twenty second at noon.
Special council meeting.
Special council meeting. Have a motion to bring that forward. Counselor Edwards seconded. Counselor McQuarren Paul. Questions to council? Can you make that there?
May or may not be able to do it by telephone.
Yeah, this will be just a Zoom, right? It can be done by phone too. We have. As we have three connectivity. Yeah, if you don't have connectivity, as long as we got three.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll reach out to, uh, also have to see if you can be there to make sure we have three. Any other questions? All in favor? Carrie. Uh. J one. Recommendations that administration be directed to proceed with that parks and recreation master plan with funding from the local government housing initiatives grant. L G H grant, can I have a motion to bring that one forward, counselor, can I second? Counselor Edwards, that's good. Also, McLean Cole.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, uh, through the mayor to staff, I'm just curious, but at the end of this process, what will we be holding? What's, what, what are the benefits?
Through the mayor, the benefits of having a parks and recreation master plan, first of all, it is a, um, it is something that is required from our official community plans, that's something that's been, that's been recommended to move forward with, uh, what'll give us an idea of is, uh, what our current assets are in the recreation complex and means to make that complex, uh, more, uh, user friendly, uh, how we can perform different upgrades, so it's, uh, able to serve a wider variety of the public and, uh, come back with some recommendations on how to do that in the most possible. So basically, increasing the usership of the recreation complex.
It's. Any other questions? One bigger? Carrie. And that any remaining L G H I funding be used towards the connect, the cusp active transportation network plan and waterfront master plan, and instead of using the NAC for legacy funding. I have motion to bring that one forward, most of the noise, seconded, also Edwards, questions? Do staff, how much would we have left over, I thought we didn't read that?
We actually did, I did, we did, yeah. Um.
Hundred twenty seven.
There's about hundred twenty seven thousand remaining. Oh, yeah, that's how much is left on the grant, but we didn't say how much that the, uh, recreation master plan would cost, because what we found is consultants are reviewing our reports and then bidding up to that amount.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And you've got the right now, council step, right now, you're recommending that we use it for the active transportation plan, but you gave other examples too.
Yeah, so the active transportation plan, of course, is what we heard today, also just adopted. Um, so any monies that we've had to put towards it ourselves, we would then use this funding, you know, basically, it'd just be like an account transfer, is what it'd be, fund transfer. Uh, so same also with the waterfront master plan, any money that was supposed to come with the NAC for legacy funding, whatever is left over within this grant, we would use that as a, as a transfer over, so we're not affecting the NAC for legacy fund. Because basically, this money's sitting there, and if we didn't use it, we'd have to give it back to the province.
Any other questions, counselor, can we?
Just, uh, through the mayor's staff, well done, staff, for finding that, I'm like.
It was the director's finance.
Well, one, um, director, I think.
Good, and the questions? All in favor? Carrie. Revised hostings. Reservation polls. Recommendation for revised hosting reservation policy, C zero zero one be adopted as presented, can I motion to bring that one forward? Most of them crank call, seconded, and Sir Edwards, questions on? How was this originally, when, when was the last time we updated this?
Wasn't that long ago, um, actually, this, uh, was June twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Yeah. Interesting. Yeah, and we missed it.
So these were recommendations that came forward from the hospital, the Hot Springs Hospitality Manager, and what she thought would make sense, uh, moving forward. Uh, specifically with the cancellation fees, we have a problem with people booking oh, weeks worth of reservations, and then when they, when it finally works out for them that they want to come, they cancel the rest of the time, so this is a, a longstanding issue, so if we had a twenty five dollar cancellation fee, um, that, um, that, you know, they're not necessarily going to get back, then that makes people think twice.
Any other questions? All in favor? Carrie. The information. Our recommendation that items K one to K eleven be received for information, you have a motion to bring the commercial items forward, that noise that you have, counselor, plan, though, that's where the noise and maybe items you wish to bring down.
Sorry, thank you, I was reading, no, I have nothing else, so I'm clear, Paul.
Uh, uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, just to go quickly, the board highlights K two, board highlights from regional district, this is what the communications team in R D C thinks is important, as opposed to what I think is important in my report. And then, of course, K three is the R D C newsletter that I referenced, so yes, it is out. People are curious about reading it, it is there, so that's it, thanks.
Yeah. Sir Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing specific to bring forward, but I want to echo, um, the compliments, and I'm so proud of our diligent and everyone who takes care of everything, especially Ray, with the flowers and the library, like, I'm, I'm really happy that we're receiving some positive feedback on that, so I just wanted to highlight that.
Good, uh, yeah, I'll echo council, learn, pose, R D C. Highlights, our newsletter, I did sign up, and I also tried to read everything, there's a lot to read through. But, uh, took a lot, uh, I also want to echo community grants, uh, except the one, um, what, what, counsel, I'll have to find it, what's it called, the, uh, it's, it's not called community grants for the R C K commission.
Development grants?
It's a, area K.
Uh, there's discretionary.
Discretion.
Okay, yeah.
Discretion, just want to echo Teresa, whether that R D C area K, she funded, uh, forty five hundred dollars to the, uh, Bear Lakes Wildfire Fighting Wildfire Society, uh, we have now twenty six members signed up for the S one hundred, the S one eighty five, and, uh, we're putting our reports together, and we hand it into the, uh, or, uh, all our, uh, what we can do to help, um, fire department, and we're also meeting with Jonathan Fox of the B C Wildfire Service, and, uh, we will be recognized to help in, in wildfires now. So I think it's a great thing, and I just wanted to echo to Teresa, the area K for doing this. So again, we will, um, all our, all what we can do to S one hundred, S one eighty five, some of them have a wildfire danger tree assessa- accessibility falling, of our danger tree falling, so all that can be put together and work as a team with the fire department when they, on a wildfire outside of their boundaries and in our park, so that it's, instead of having a milk brigade heading out there with water jugs on the base, it's a proper way to do it, and when there is a wildfire, uh, this group will have to inform B C Wildfire Service if we can be involved or not, so anyway, just wanted to echo that, uh, um, and actually, she does all the funding for all the fire departments and other communities too, so um, we're getting ahead of it, so it's really good, but this year has been great, no wildfires in our area, anyway. Been great, you know, it's supposed to rain here till September, end of September, it's been, you know, so.
Then the lake level will be up.
That was the other one, too. Um, the other one, uh. Uh, we actually letter ministry, transportation, we there are part ferry concerns, um, that's been a hassle since they put the electric uh, make me an electric ferry, can make me one and a half runs and has to shut down for half an hour to charge up. So, they do have a diesel engine they can use, but they're not using it, so I think when it comes to emergency, I think that should be used, um, and, uh, it has affected the, the logging industry immensely, trying to get across there is that's probably the busiest area we have right now for forest industry, but, and there's probably you gotta get there at four in the morning to, just to get my mind on, to get it across at that six, um, it's a long, long wait to get across, so. Anyway, I'm glad, um, you wrote the letter. Uh, so, any further questions? On there? Very. Any acting items from them? Notice a motion? Questions from the press republic, so anybody that speaks, speak up on the topic only that was presented today, nothing else. And whoever it is, uh, speak your name and to who the question will be. Anybody on Trump, anybody on Zoom?
Doesn't seem to be, doesn't look like any questions from online.
Okay, and the public audience? Um, oh, oh, you have to speak your name first.
If I may, my name is Lisa Dome. And I just wanted to reiterate, uh, what you said, because, um, there's also about, um, taking it on ourselves as well as the funding, we, um, we seek only approval from the village for the location and the ability to do it, and the rest of it will do ourselves. So I just want to reiterate that on behalf of the region.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lisa. Any other questions? Hearing none, again, I want to thank, uh, you two members in the back there, Hugh and Beth, they're instigating this, uh, active master transportation plan, that, great job. Thanks. Any other questions? Alright, if there are none, um, we are going to end camera. Notice of end camera that importance for section ninety point two of our council meeting must be closed. For the public, if the subject matter being considered relates to, or is one or more of the following consideration of information received and held in confidence related to negotiations between the ministry and the province government, or the federal government, or both, or between a parish government or the federal government, or both, and a third study. Persons other than council members and municipal authorities will be excluded from the meeting. The panel will be, the council, the executive, council, the, hey, we will take a five minute break, and we will yeah, by the way, welcome to, well, you have to read it. So thank you for attending. Thank you.